This time, we're going to turn it over to, we're going to go to 11.0, the superintendent's update. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Little.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you can see beneath the superintendent update section of the agenda, there's, it's quite a robust agenda tonight, so I am just going to call our first person to come up and present, if you don't mind. It's my privilege today to, I'm going to have Mr. Salters welcome our guest. Go ahead, Mr. Salters, you welcome our guest, if you wouldn't mind.
Thank you, Dr. Little. Members of the board tonight, I have with me Mike Gallagher, he's with Compass Municipal Advisors. Mike, here's the clicker. He's going to give you a brief presentation on our bond sale, or recent bond sale, and the outlook for our bond program. As you know, we passed a bond referendum in 2018, and we've done our first major sale this past week. And Mike's been financial advisor with the district for a number of years, and Compass does a great job leading us through this operation. So, Mike, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Dr. Little, it's a pleasure to be here with you tonight.
Grab that microphone.
It's a pleasure to be here.
Maybe? There we go. It's still a pleasure to be here, yes, sir.
It's still a pleasure to be here. We put together a little overview for you, wanted to bring you up to speed. Last time I was with you was in February, and, you know, you had just passed the referendum. We were authorized in resolution for the issuance of the full $365 million, and gave us the latitude and flexibility to look and see what your construction demands were and what market conditions were. And so, I wanted to share with you some good news from the transaction and... There we go. Okay, so we'll start looking at the overview of the issuance. Both, we got the intercept rating, which is where the state of South Carolina guarantees the debt of the school district. They do that for all school districts in South Carolina. It had a AA1 rating from Moody's and a AA rating from Standard and Poor's. The issuer credit rating, which is for the, for the school district, and that's as you stand on your own, is a AA2 from Moody's, which is one notch below where the intercept rating is. And part of that's because the state of South Carolina has a AAA rating. And then you have a AA rating from Standard and Poor's, which is exactly the same as the intercept rating would be from the state. So that was very good. We sold these bonds on the 8th, last Tuesday. It's scheduled to close on the 29th of this month. It's a general obligation pledge, which means it's the full faith and credit and taxing power of the school district. And so they will levy enough to make sure that those payments are made. The term of it was 25 years. A couple of things that are really interesting to note is, is the way the bids came in on it. We got nine bidders that bid on the transaction. Very happy to say, for 25 years, we were able to borrow $165 million for 2.52%.
Wow, that's great.
It was insane. I mean, we had a great sale, very, very good rates. You'll see the other bids that were there. It wasn't like Bank of America Merrill Lynch missed the boat on it. You can look at those bids, they're packed in very, very tightly, and they gave us a very, very good rate. One of the things that happened with it is, was part of the way the bid was structured, we got a re-offering premium of approximately $15.4 million. School districts are allowed to put that money into your project fund, something I wouldn't recommend spending today. I would say you're just getting going in your program, but I would set those dollars aside and look at where you are.
Walk us through that, Mr. Gallagher, just kind of in layman's terms, so we understand.
What a re-offering premium is?
Yeah.
What it is, is it's prepaid interest. It's so, the way the bonds are, instead of like when you go finance your house, you get one rate on it. And so that 2.519 is not just one single rate. Your $165 million was broken up into 25 individual little loans that mature each year. And in each of those, there's two different rates that we have to look at. One of those rates is the coupon rate. That is the rate that the school district is paying the investor. The yield is what the effective rate is. And so what we're looking at, that 2.51, that's what you're really effectively paying, that's what the investor gets. But, the way the bids come in, we had 5% coupons out to the 10-year mark, and after that, we had some 2 and 1/4s and 3% coupons. And so we had very low rates. So, you know, in the past, we brought issues to you for refunding. When these bonds become callable in 10 years, we're probably not going to be able to refund them. And that's a good thing, because you've got the savings on the front end. You don't have to do another transaction down the road. So, very good. But you can take this premium, set it aside, and, you know, look at where you are as you move through your program. You're just getting started, you may have cost overruns, or you may be able to bring everything in a budget, and then you would be able to not have to borrow quite as much money. And that's the way we've broken it out. Originally, we had, and we'll show here in a minute, we originally had this set up for six transactions, six individual debt issuances. We were able to condense that down to four. Part of it was, we pushed this bond issuance up, because the market was very, very good. And we wanted to go ahead and lock in at today's rates. I don't know about y'all, but I don't know what in the world's going to happen in 2020. I don't know who's going to be running for president, I don't know what in the world that's going to have on the financial markets, if anything's going to be better, or are they going to be worse? We don't know. But we know right now, it's a good time, and so we sat down with administration and talked through, here's where you are on your cash flow schedule, got updated schedules and looked at them, and we were able to push things up to be able to issue a little bit more at this time. Not going to have to do a bond anticipation note, maybe back up our issuance earlier next year and do it during the summer. Okay? So this put a net deposit into the project fund of $93,729,778. And what we also did was, we did a ban early this year. We did a bond anticipation note of $85 million, and we're going to pay that off when it matures on the 29th. It'll be paid off. When I talked about the credit ratings, you see there, AAA is the highest possible credit rating. Y'all are just below that. The things that were notated in the report were the strengths, was the historical trend of balanced operations, the sizable and growing tax base, and the strong reserves and liquidity position. All the, you know, two of those things are things that are within the control of this board and this administration. It is a credit to y'all for what you have done here for your fiscal strength. That's what translated into nine bids and translated into a very low rate. The credit weaknesses, you can't do anything about the pension burden. That's outside of your control. And Act 388, we all know there's nothing that y'all can do about that either. But those are their two weaknesses. It's not bad when your weaknesses are things you can't do anything about, but you need to be proud of the good things that you have done to put yourselves in those positions.
So every spring, we go through a budgeting process where we struggle with how much to keep in the fund balance, essentially. So can you talk through, you know, where our fund balance was with respect to this bond issuance, and if it prepared as well and helped us with those rates?
I can't speak exactly to where you are, but when you see, when you see where it says "strong reserves and liquidity position," that helped you immensely. That puts you into that copy here. I can give for y'all a copy of Moody's rating scorecard, and you can see quantifiably where that puts you, if that's information that y'all would like. But yes, the fund balance being at a good, strong level, that is very helpful.
If I may take a point of privilege, since I've served on the board so long, Mr. Butler and Mr. Salters, and that whole team in the finance department, they are so committed to that fund balance. And then now Dr. Little has joined that commitment, and that's kind of a hard thing to explain out in the public, because it's, it's money that if something were to happen, it's rainy day funds, we call it.
And 10 years ago, when we saw the economic downturn in 2008, we saw a lot of, a lot of my clients had to go issue tax anticipation notes, they had to do something. That is something that Lexington 1 has not done, that I can recall as long as I've been in this business.
No. And they, they are so committed to the fiscal, just the smartness.
Responsible. Very responsible.
Fiscal responsibility, but I want to thank Jeff and, and Mr. Butler and, and their team, because that, that has been a long-range vision, and I'm glad Dr. Little's joined on that vision as well, so it's exciting.
Well, and Ms. Smith, I think that you crediting Jeff and then Mr. Butler, good credit and good fiscal responsibility isn't something that happens in one year. It's a long-term investment in making good decisions and wise planning and wise management. And so I think that's a credit to everyone out there that works in our finance department.
Exactly. And we, and we took time this summer, had an opportunity that we had, the analysts from Moody's Investor Service were here, they were in the state in June, and, you know, I had them come and sit down and meet with, you know, Dr. Little and Jeff and, and John before he retired. So yeah, I mean, it's very important, and they, they note that.
Thank you. That's great.
Moving right along, this is just a graphical representation showing what your debt looks like. Everything that's in the royal blue color is just the outstanding general obligation bonds, and you've got some others. I think the two things to key on is the lighter blue color. That is your referendum program, and we've sized everything out. When we said 25 years, your next issue that's going to be done next year, going to be done for 24. We're just going to try to sync everything up where it all matures at the same time. We did move taxes from 85.3 to 90 mils this past year, and according to the plan, would be to go to 95 next year, and then to 99, depending upon how these transactions work and as the debt issuances go, and the needs of the district, what your, what your facility needs are. So that's what, sort of where the plan is. Have things tagged to go out to, as we get into 2029, 2030, and then you'll see that there is a substantial drop there. That way, if there is a need for more facilities, if the area continues to grow as it has been, then you will have capacity there that we should be able to fit that into your next So speaking a little bit more about the 2018 referendum, $365 million approved by the voters. As I told you before, we originally had six transactions scheduled. Happy to say now, we're down to four. We cut two of them out. We're not going to have to do a bond anticipation unless there's some changes to your construction cash flow schedule. That's what drives everything. What the needs of the district are, and trying to make sure that above all else, that there's money there to pay the invoices when they come in from the contractors. You know, it's good that y'all were in a position, that you had projects ready to go, and you're able to go ahead and get them locked in. But as I said about that premium earlier, you know, there's still a lot of work to be done, and you don't know where those projects are going to come in, and we don't know what the rates are going to be. We're looking at next year, having an issuance of $150 million. It could be pushed up a little more, depending on the needs, or it could be pulled back. Really depends on two things. Really going to be driven by, one, what the needs of the district are, and the second will be looking at market conditions.
I may take a point of privilege on that, because I see, Mr. Salters, some of your construction people are here tonight, and the fact that they have identified prototypes for our schools, I, you cannot, it saves our constituents so much money. It also makes it easy to go, we, we hit the ground running, and we have a building design, and it's ready to go. And it's so exciting to see these prototypes going up across the district, which are basically the same schools. They're just sited for that land and for the needs of that particular school. So I want to thank y'all for making that a reality.
Okay. We don't have anything else on this. Other, next page is your, is the debt service structure report, and that's just really gets to the math behind the graph for all of the bond issues that you have outstanding. The thing I really want to bring your attention to is column J. You know, when we did a $365 million referendum program, and I remember the numbers that John had me run, we were well over $400 million at times. And we know that the list of needs was really close to $400 million. There was a lot of things that were cut out, and one of the things that was done was making sure that we had money within the annual maintenance or annual issuance area. Very happy to say, as of right now, we've got about $5,250,000 each year that would be available for y'all to use to cover some of those HVAC roofs, all of the things that were not a part of the referendum, that you have that, that's within your 8% authority, and that's something that you can, you know, you can budget, and I'm sure these are all things that you have in your capital program already. It's not as if you can go out and add a whole bunch of new projects to it, but those were things that were all within your program.
And that $5 million, like if we'd used none of it in 2021, then 2022, we have 10.5 million?
No, it's going to be a one-time. It'll be one-time. It's what, it, basically what it does is, we've solved out for the millage, and if you did not issue it, then the taxes would drop.
Okay.
Okay? So it's not something that's just going to be like a recurring revenue stream that you could plan on. Very short-term, it would be something that you would borrow. We have the issuance going, I believe in two weeks, that it will be sold and closed in early November, and it'll be paid off in March.
Okay.
Okay. And the last thing is just a little fun, congratulations.
Yeah, that's exciting. Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Board, are there any questions or comments for Mr. Gallagher or Mr. Salters?
So I, I had read, I actually was able to find the article about the journal, what, they talked about the flipping of muni, of muni bonds, basically by the buyers of these. Is there, does that happen? Do we?
It's nothing that I think the district would be concerned about or worried about.
Okay.
I mean, it's nothing that, you, once you sell them, we sell these in the primary market. Bank of America Merrill Lynch bought it. They either parked it into institutional accounts, they had, I mean, the way, the way the process works, we sell it in the primary market to an underwriter. That underwriter, then his job is to find homes or investors for the paper.
Got you, got you. And then, as far as the, the re-offering premium, does that money just sit in an escrow account?
That money's going to go into your project fund. So that money is going to go into the project fund when it's deposited on the 29th. It's going to go to the state, to the county treasurer's office, and they're going to invest it over in what's known as the state treasurer's LJUP. And so that is about the best rate you can get right now for full liquidity. It's a better rate than what you're going to get from the bank. Part of the reason is, is because the state treasurer has a different set of investment criteria. One of the things he's able to invest in is commercial paper, and that gets a slightly higher rate.
Got you. Okay.
I do want to clarify something. You, your advice would be, though, to let it sit for the time being until we get further into the bond referendum program. Is that what you, I heard you say earlier?
Yes, sir. I, I would say you want to see where you are as you move through your program. We don't know where, you, number one, we don't know, we don't have all the projects locked down on cost. They may get into a situation when you're going into a renovation, and your contractor comes to you and say, "Well, we're in here, we're already tearing up the ceiling, we're already tearing up the lights, this HVA system needs to be replaced." It would be really good that you had those dollars set aside, that you could use them for something like that if it were to come up. You're very early in your program, and I would say it would be best to, to sit and, as you move through it.
And I assume that the funds can only be used for the original terms of the bond referendum?
Correct. You could only use that money for referendum projects, or you could use it to defuse a portion of the debt. I have a client that, right now, is going through the process of using it to defuse the debt.
That's great. Any other questions or comments, Board?
I have a question for Mr. Salters. We keep hearing about the prototypes, saving us money. Do we know exactly how much money we're saving with the prototypes?
We don't have an exact dollar figure. I think that the ability for us to pull forward some of the borrowing, the original schedule, had it, had us borrowing a smaller chunk of money, being able to pull that forward into the program is an example of how this has saved us money, built more interest in the sizing, because it was a $165 million issue. So that $15 million premium, you know, could have been eight, it could have been 10, you know, it's, it's hard to put a factor on that. But what we do know is that every year, we're seeing inflationary costs, and that's built into our referendum about 4%. And so, we're seeing those numbers come up, and so you add that on top of premiums like that, and the savings can be pretty significant.
Thank you.
And if I could, Ms. Smith, if I could just take a minute, I'd like to, you guys have acknowledged the staff, but I really would like to point out, you know, Deborah Seymour took over, basically, a lot of this work related to the bonds and capital project stuff, and, you know, Dina Bishop retired, we all talk about Mr. Butler, but Dina Bishop retired, and that was her primary role, and Deborah stepped right in and, and, you know, prepared all the documents, and has really done an outstanding job working with our bond attorney and, and Mike, getting, getting up to this point. So, and then the other finance staff has been there supporting all the needs as well. And of course, Mr. Stae Meyer, Mr. Warren over there, you know, really making it all happen on the ground. If, if we can get the money, they can find a way to, to spend it efficiently, so I really appreciate all the hard work that they do.
Thank you, Mr. Salters.
Well, let's give these teams a round of applause.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Thank you. Next on our agenda, Ms. Green, you have a brief update for us, I believe, for the regional meeting.
Yes, actually, was it two weeks ago?
Yeah, two weeks ago.
Was it two weeks ago? It's been, October is like all a blur. Ms. Smith and Mr. Anderson and Mr. Oswald and I attended the...
Dr. Little.
And Dr. Little attended the School Board Association's Regional Advocacy Meeting. They have five of those in the fall, in different locations around the state, to kind of, I guess, galvanize the troops, to get ready for the legislative session, and just to talk about some of the things that are coming on the horizon with the education bill. And even though there's, we've kind of, the House and Senate, South Carolina House and Senate have been in summer recess, they've actually been meeting and had, I mean, they're continuing to work, and so they just, they get us together and make us aware of what's coming around the bend on very important topics to us, and what we need to be prepared for and be ready to advocate for. Mike, did you have any thoughts about that? And then, actually, last week, just, I'm going to dovetail on that, last week, Mr. Anderson and I also attended a School Board Association Beyond the Basics training, which was titled "From Conflict to Collaboration." And it was an excellent presentation with a, like a life coach from Columbia, retired military, he'd been in the military for 30 something years, and just talking about, you know, working collaboratively, you know, we tell our, that's one of our, you know, things that we teach the students, and it's so important for us to work on that and work well with each other and model it for our children, because really, they, they learn more from what they see than what they hear. And so, it's been a busy few weeks of professional learning for the board, and so we encourage everybody to participate if you can. If y'all ever have any questions, all the stuff is on the School Board Association website, anybody can look at it. There's always some great handouts and some training materials out there. But I personally am eager for the legislative session to get going again, so that we can see where they're going with the education bill. The funding plan from Frank Rainwater, the Revenue and Fiscal Affairs site, came out last week, and it was a very interesting document. I think Dr. Little has perused that, and it's not quite what we thought they were going to create. So we've got some things coming around the bend that we may need to ask your help for in contacting our local legislators, because school funding in South Carolina is broken, and we need to fix it, and I think it's going to take everybody, parents, teachers, administrators, community members that don't have children, to participate in that advocacy, so.
Thank you very much, Ms. Green.
Can I just say one quick thing? That, that meeting was held in Lexington 4 at the Early Childhood Learning Center, which was so neat for our board, because I, I think was that, was that y'all's first time going to that? I mean, it's amazing what they're doing over there with the three and four and five-year-olds, and as you know, part of our bond referendum, we're going to be building two early childhood learning centers that will be very similar to that site. So it was really neat for us to go in a building that's dedicated to that and see what our, you know, how that wants to dovetail with our vision, so that part was exciting, too.
And I was going to make, I did highlight one thing that was stated when we were at the School Board Association advocacy thing, was that this past year with the teacher pay raise, that budget writers, their analysis has shown that that teacher raise in 2019 was the largest teacher pay raise in 35 years in South Carolina. And so that's significant, and it's also kind of pitiful that it took 35 years to get a, you know, substantive raise for our teachers. And hopefully, that's just the phase one of ongoing attention to teacher pay in our state, because that's really the way that we're going to get and retain great teachers.
Okay. Thank you very much. It is now my privilege and pleasure to welcome Dr. Shane Phillips, to give us, he's going to do us a, give us a data update, and give us a synopsis of some of the things that we can expect.
Madam Chair? There it is. Okay. It's my pleasure tonight to provide you with our annual accountability update. We're going to start with what's been in the media recently, which is our state report cards. Before I talk too much about results, I want to give you a little bit of context and a little bit of history about these documents that are produced yearly now by the state. So prior to the 2017-18 school year, there was a brand-new report card design that was practically not used at all. It didn't provide a lot of ratings, it didn't, it just provided sort of some outline of information about the progress of a school. Did not provide any kind of rating or grade for a school. Also during that time, there were, there was a change, a pretty major change made to our SC Ready test, and that was the addition of what's called the TDA, the Text Dependent Analysis, which, there's always been a writing prompt on that test. This was sort of a shift in the content of that test and caused a shift in our instruction as well. What that, and just briefly, what that entails is a writing prompt that requires a student to refer to a piece of text and be able to support an argument that they write about with examples from the text. So in the past, the, the writing prompts had been kind of superficial and sort of simple. This took it sort of to a whole other level. Then in the, beginning with the 2017-18 school year, the EOC redesigned the accountability system, sort of as part of the whole process that had been gone on before, and designed a brand-new report card. That report card has several components, which I'll go over in a second. One of those components is a student progress measure, which was a value-add measure by a SAS process out of North Carolina called EVAS. And it basically provided a measure of certainty about whether or not a school went up or down in any given year. It didn't tell you how much they went up or down, it just said, "We're pretty certain they went up," or "We're pretty certain they went down." Another change that was made at that particular time was that adult ed prior, when a kid transferred from adult ed, or to, from a high school to an adult ed institution, they were allowed to be excluded from the grad rate calculation. With this school year, that exclusion was eliminated. So statewide, you saw a little bit of a drop in graduation rate that year, because those students were now included in the school's graduation rate cohort. The next thing that happened was, that same text-dependent analysis process was added to the English 1 and the course test, which threw a whole wrinkle into that test. And then, what they did was, they alternated grades for science and social studies. In the past, we had given science and social studies to grades three through eight, both. Now, it had, they had done a few things differently prior to that, one of them being, at one point, they took half of each grade and gave half of those kids science and half of them social studies. The goal of all of that being twofold. One, reduce testing. Two, save money, okay, on producing those materials by the state. In the 2017-18 school year, what they decided to do was give science in grades four, six, and eight, and social studies in grades five and seven, nothing in grade three, except for reading and math. Okay? Which made it difficult to gauge progress over years as you, as you look at, you know, how did students do in social studies in this year compared to this year? Well, we can't really do that now, because those same kids didn't take that same test. So you can't really look at growth there on that. Then, this past year, that EVAS measure that they used for student progress was put out for another bid by the state, and so they changed that, and a company called Education Analytics got that contract. And the process and calculation of that metric is completely different. And if I'm being completely transparent, it hasn't been explained to me in a way that I understand yet. So, I do know that it's different, because it's, it's not what they were doing with EVAS. I finally got my head wrapped around that, and now it changed. So, when I... So, when I figure it out, I'll be sure to let you guys know. And then, so that's where we are now, is in this whole part here. But what's coming up are some further changes, all right? So you see where I'm going with this, it, it becomes difficult each year to compare a report card from one year to the next, all right? But coming up next year, there is a proviso now that's reportedly for one year only, and that is to eliminate all Social Studies testing for one year with the goal of saving money, okay? We will see if that lasts for one year. Also, we're transitioning in the high schools from an English One End of Course Test to an English Two End of Course Test. So at this point, some kids will be taking English One for accountability, some kids will be taking English Two for accountability this year. And there's a whole, Erica can testify to this, there's a very complex sort of flowchart that goes with what counts for whom and that kind of thing. So this is, this is a little bit of a adjustment for our, our high schools. And then finally, next year, the report cards have to be made available by September first.
That would be great for us.
It will be great for us. It does put the state under the gun, so it puts a lot of stress, the state's putting a lot of stress.
Well luckily, luckily the state's real good at following its own rules, so.
Well, sure.
When did we, what was the date that they were unembargaded this year?
October first.
Okay.
That was, by law, they had to be done by October first this year, September first next year.
A whole, okay, we'll see if it happens.
Yep, we'll see. Okay, so, again, let's talk about what goes into these report cards. First of all, actually, let me go back here because it's important that we look at it kind of in this context. When this report card system was being designed, the, the point or the, the premise on which they were being designed was to provide a sort of comprehensive look at schools based on the South Carolina profile of a graduate, okay, which is a kind of a big holistic global look at schools. What came about was something a little bit different. So there are several components and they are a little bit different for elementary, middle, and then high school. So for elementary and middle, you have these components, you have student achievement, which, and what, I'm gonna give you the points for a school that has more than twenty English language learners, because that's the majority of our schools. Student achievement's worth thirty-five points, that's based off of South Carolina Ready, ELA, and math. Preparing for success is worth ten points, that's based off of Science and Social Studies on SC Pass. Student progress, also based off of the SC Ready, ELA, and math, is worth thirty-five points. The progress of ELL students is worth ten points and that's based off the results of the WEDA Access Assessment. And then school quality, which is based off of a self-reported student engagement survey given to every kid grades three through twelve, okay? So that's for elementary and middle. Which means that at elementary and middle school, ninety percent of the hundred points that you can get come from standardized tests, which takes us back to the prior accountability system, which was based almost completely on standardized, well, completely on standardized tests. We get ten percent off of a self-reported survey now. For high school, there is no student progress, which I will talk about a little bit more when we talk about end-of-course scores. So you get thirty-five points for student achievement, ten points for preparing for success, so the student achievement comes from your end-of-course scores in algebra and English, your preparing for success comes from biology and US history, you get ten points for ELL progress, you get ten points for school quality, and then there's a college and career readiness. College career readiness is probably the closest the state came to doing this global look they did, but, but it also includes SAT scores, ACT scores, ready-to-work assessment scores, professional certifications, the ASVAB test, so you can see the majority of those things that you can get college and career readiness endorsement for are standardized tests. So again, at the high school, the vast, vast majority of your points come from standardized tests. The only one that doesn't, only two that don't are the school quality worth ten points and the graduation rate worth twenty-five. All right, so those are the components of the report card. Given all that and the differences between years, here are our 2019 report card ratings. Eleven percent of our schools are below average, forty-three average, twenty-one percent excellent, and twenty-five percent good. All right, so now we'll just quickly go through our, our assessment results so that you can see how we did on each of these individual assessments. First, SC Ready, again, this is ELA and math grades three through eight. So here, I've provided you with the state results and the district results. So these first two are ELA with the state and district here, and this is math with the state and district here. As you can see, if we just look at these top two chunks, which are the percent of our students meeting or exceeding standard, we surpassed the state in both ELA and math. And if you look down here at the very bottom little chunk, that's our students who do not meet standard and, and that excludes the approaches, so again, our not met percentages are lower than that of the state, sir.
And Dr. Phillips, this grading algorithm of exceeds, meets, approaches, or not met is not risk-stratified based upon anything, so not your percent of free or reduced lunch or?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir. All right, so since our kids in grades three through eight all take this test each year, it's, I've provided you with some change over time here, so, again, here's the state percent meeting or exceeding and the districts' percent meeting or exceeding. We are up three-point-four percent in ELA and up almost a percent in math. And I think this is, this is a testament to the hard work we've done with the student engagement model in those two content areas, yes, sir.
Is the state moving at all as well? Because again, the whole purpose of this is obviously.
The state did increase a little bit, yes, sir. Oh, sorry. So this is, since now the state provides us with percentile ranks based on the state performance, we can kind of look at how these scores are distributed. So as you can see, our sort of, our median score, our median percentile rank is right below the sixtieth percentile across the board in ELA and in math. So you can see how those scores are distributed across the district. Yes, sir.
Do you have any insight into the districts that are either at the either end of the state? I mean, I guess you don't know where other districts are, like the district that's up at the hundred versus the district that's at the zero?
I can tell you, I, I do know who those are, not off the top of my head, but I have that all plotted. I do know that what you see distribution-wise is that it follows poverty lines pretty closely. So the higher the poverty, the lower the, the score. Nothing new there. All right, SC Pass, again, is Science and Social Studies, Science given to grades four, six, and eight, and Social Studies given to five and seven only. Okay, so, again, if you look at the top two chunks, we do pretty well here in Science compared to the state. You'll notice a little bit different here, it's because Social Studies is only rated on three levels. They were actually working to get, this coming year, to get it on the same sort of scale as everything else, but they're not doing it next year, so we're, we're at three here. So four levels here, we're doing fine, and here again, we're surpassing the state as well. And again, it makes no sense to look at a comparison over last year, just know that our percent meeting or exceeding is greater than that of the state. End of course, tests, Algebra One, English One, Biology and US History. This is just the letter grade distribution. Again, the first bar is the state and the second bar is the district. And as you can see, we surpassed the state in Algebra One on As, Bs, Cs, and Bs, and then we do better on the, the percent of students failing. And then on English One, we have, again, the same story, better on As, Bs, and Cs, fewer Bs, and fewer Fs. Okay, so in Biology, same story, a good many more As, Bs, Cs, about the same amount of Bs, and dramatically fewer Fs. And then in US History, again, a great many more As and Bs, more Cs, slightly fewer Bs, and dramatically fewer Fs. And this is just the distribution, so you can kind of see which, which tests overall we do better in. We do best in English One here, followed by Biology, oh, excuse me, followed by US History, then by Biology, then by Algebra One. So the line here in the middle is the median and the diamond is the average score.
What's the red dot, sir?
The red dots are outliers.
Outlier scores?
Outlier scores, just individual student scores. So what you probably have here are kids that didn't test and received a zero on the test and this is just a, a kid that didn't do too, too well somewhere. So this is the, this is the twenty-fifth percentile, seventy-fifth percentile, fiftieth percentile, and the mean, and then this is the minimum disregarding outliers, minimum and maximum.
I know a few years ago, it was kind of a national thing where parents were opting the kids out of taking the test.
Still a thing?
It is, like, how many did we have opt out this year? Is it coming down, the numbers?
I, I don't have that off the top of my head, it was maybe a handful.
Okay.
A handful.
Did you see it, and any, was there a pattern at, at schools or just kind of, just a scattering across the district?
It's, it's a scattering, really, it's, it's here and there. At that one, at that time that you're talking about, it was kind of clustered in one particular area. It's not now, it's just kind of a little bit everywhere. Yes, sir.
And then do we use that distribution, I mean, as we talk about all means all, to try to bring it closer, both at the school level, I mean, if we give feedback to?
Yes, we, I mean, we, we have discussed in length, in fact, we had a meeting yesterday where we talked about, you know, making sure that we're addressing the needs of all students on these things. We look at gaps between different demographics to make sure that we're providing opportunities for those kids to, to succeed in those tests, which should lead to those minimums coming up, that maximum staying at a hundred and, you know, squishing down that distribution into something that is more attractive.
I mean, we want to move the average or median up, but we also want to bring the distribution.
Right, correct, that's correct, yes, sir. Okay, so let's talk about AP and SAT. Okay, so two lines here, this is Advanced Placement, so AP test. Down here at the bottom is the percent of high school students taking at least one AP test, okay? So as you can see, two years ago, we were at sixteen percent, then we were at eighteen percent, then we were at nineteen percent. So as, as we increase the participa, the participation rate in these classes, you can see that the passing rate is staying relatively stable, okay? As we're encouraging these kids to go into these higher rigor courses, people might estimate that these would, these scores would kind of drop precipitously, but they're staying relatively stable. So you can see that now we have almost one in five kids in high school taking at least one AP course and sixty-three percent of those kids are getting a three to five score on those, on at least one of those tests. Finally, we're gonna talk about SAT. So at, in the state, yes, sir?
I'm sorry.
No, it's, it's cool.
So again, I think we graduate two thousand, twenty-five hundred, so I just did a quick math, and asked two hundred and twenty to about five hundred, about that fifty to sixty.
So, this is actually all high school students, so we, we have about seven thousand, a little more than seven thousand kids.
Oh, okay.
So, this is like fourteen hundred kids.
It's per year taking one AP class in that year?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Oh, okay, wow, that's even better, that's even a lot more kids.
That's about fourteen hundred kids taking us. All right, so here we are with SAT, so this is participation. Now again, one of the changes that was made, I did note it on the timeline, I should have, is that last year, kids had a choice of whether or not to take the ACT or the SAT, okay? This is our graduating senior report, so this doesn't necessarily reflect that decision last year, but what we can say with certainty is that from our graduating seniors, sixty-seven percent of those kids took the SAT compared to fifty-seven percent at the state level, okay? So a great, you know, two-thirds of our kids are taking the SAT test. And when you look at national comparisons, you guys know that there are a lot of states where that percentage is dramatically lower, okay? So if we look down here at the scores, this first bar is the nation, the second bar is the state, and the third bar is our district. And as you can see, in reading, math, and then obviously in composite, we surpassed both the nation and the state. So that's, that's some good news there. Okay, so that is my report, I'd be happy to answer any further questions you guys have. All right.
I, I have a question. In Pillion, three of their four schools are rated below average and they're the only schools in the district. Has there been any talk about addressing that problem?
So, yes, ma'am, it's, it is certainly a problem. Any time a school doesn't perform where we feel like they should, it is certainly something that we need to, that we address. And so we look, we take a really deep look at instructionally what's happening, at test scores, at the environment, that kind of thing. So, you know, we certainly know that, that there are things that, across the district, that we have to address, but, and that, that's no different in Pillion than it is anywhere else, but yes, ma'am, we, we do look at that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Nicely done, Dr. Phillips. And next on our list, Mr. Smith, if you would come forward, please. We, as you know, we are to receive quarterly updates from White and Old Middle School and I think they, you actually have some really good news for us. Shane purposely did not say anything about it because we wanted to give you an opportunity to, to brag on your school a little bit, so Mr. Smith, welcome. We may, there you go.
And I thank you, Dr. Tally, members of the board, I appreciate the opportunity to, to come back and share with you again. As you're aware, our priority status was based on the 2018 school report card. I really appreciate the, the information that Dr. Phillips shared to, to put that in some perspective and particularly as it relates to the student progress metric that was in, in the previous year's report card. I was extremely happy to, to hear that he didn't understand that one either totally, so made me feel a little better about that. The, I guess the most important bit of news to share this evening is our, the bottom line on our school report card that came out October first. We rose two levels on the report card to average this year. And while obviously in, in Lexington One or anywhere else, the average is generally not what we celebrate and certainly not what we aspire to, it does represent, I believe, a, a much better measure of who we are and where we are and certainly, as you saw from some previous information, it puts us much in line with a number of our sister middle schools and also our feeder elementary schools. So we were happy to celebrate that with our faculty this month. Not going to go through all those parts of the report card with you, but as Shane pointed out, there are four areas, five areas that points come to schools on the report card. Four of those five areas, we went up on this year's report card, including academic achievement slightly, English learners' progress, which we were very proud of. One of the things that contributed to that, through support of senior leadership and the board, we added an ESOL teacher to our staff this past year due to our growing numbers of those students and we also made some changes in how we were providing support for those students. So we were excited about that. Student progress, due, I believe mainly to the, the changing of metrics and the measurement of the. Student progress, due, I believe mainly to the changing of metrics and the measurement of that, made a very significant move. And we also had some growth in student engagement points. There was a slight dip in the other measure, which was connected to a slight dip in social studies scores, which, again, those students change from year to year who are taking the test. So excited to bring that news to you. Really more excited to talk to you about some of the things going on at White and Old Middle School. And by the way, we look forward to you guys visiting with us next Friday, so we can share in person some of what's going on, and our students can speak to you about that as well. As you may remember, we are one of the middle schools who made a significant change in our schedule this year. And we are now running a schedule in which our four core classes of language arts, math, science, and social studies are approximately 65 minutes in length. We moved world language to a third academic connections route, along with our other exploratory courses and fine arts courses. And consequently, our core teachers now are teaching four classes a day rather than five, as they did in the past. They have a common grade level planning time, which is fairly significant. I think it's important, one of the things, in addition to pay, that teachers have talked about a lot, is the opportunity for good common planning time and extended planning time. A new schedule allowed us to do a better job of that. Our academic connections teachers now teach six classes a day, but their planning time is equal to our core teachers' planning time. So we're excited about this, and particularly excited that in those core subjects, and especially language arts and math, our teachers have more time with students, and actually less students during the course of a day. And we believe that's going to provide some other growth and impact there. We are also working, as most schools are, on moving away from a pullout model in special ed, RTI, and ESOL, and moving more to a push-in model. We still have some pullout classes in all three of those areas where we serve students who really need some intensive support in resource or RTI or ESOL. But most of our students in those areas are being served by a resource, RTI, or ESOL teacher pushing in to their regular ed, language arts, or math class. And we believe that provides them support they need when they need it, and they can really get on target with support for those students. As Dr. Phillips alluded to, we also believe much of our growth and success of our students is connected to implementing the workshop model or a student engagement model, particularly in language arts and math. And the growth there is due to some super teacher work, students doing a super job. Our literacy and math coaches are doing an awesome job coaching up our teachers, and great support from instruction, particularly from Dr. Bissell in language arts and Ms. Morgan in math. So we believe that, all the way down the line, that is truly changing how we instruct in those areas. Students are more engaged, they're doing more reading, they're doing more hands-on math, and that's going to move their learning. Because of our status, as you know, we received some additional funding from the state. And we'll talk about a few of the things that that allowed us to do this past year. So while we were not happy about the status, we were, of course, excited to have some funding that we were able to do some neat things with. A significant portion of that funding allowed us to add a math instructional coach to our instructional support. We, like other middle schools, already had a literacy coach who was doing an excellent job, and a digital literacy coach who was supporting our teachers. We now have a math coach on board who we actually hired from within. Tiffany Scholl was one of our former teachers of the year and former math and science teacher. She, through our interview process, she came out on top, and we made a very good decision putting her on board. She's doing these things, among a number of others. She is doing coaching cycles with our teachers. We've worked on increasing classroom support, both through things that our teachers have, like manipulatives. She's working with our teachers on planning and doing observations and feedback, and also helping the rest of us better understand what's going on in our math classes. So we're very excited about the work there. We also used part of that funding to, along with some of what was mentioned earlier, beefing up our classroom libraries in language arts. We purchased this past summer about $30,000 worth of books for our classroom libraries. We're going to continue some of that work. Also, our PTSA is working with us to beef that up as well. So lots more books in student hands, and a lot more student reading going on, we believe. Another part of our funding went to setting up some particular trainings for our math teachers. We recognized, as many of us across the district did, that we particularly needed to do some more work in the area of math instruction. So among other things, along with instructional coach, we've also scheduled some math trainings on site with Mr. Fred Dillon, who works with the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics. We've had one of those sessions so far, and we have two more coming up within the next few months. One of the really neat things we did this summer, we chose to use part of our funding to do an in-house summer school, summer enrichment program. We selected 25 students who otherwise, these were rising 7th and 8th graders, or actually about not to be rising 7th and 8th graders, who would have otherwise had to be do summer school or possibly retained. We set up a program of four weeks, some pretty intensive stuff, and a lot of engaging stuff. We worked particularly on ELA math, study skills, and interpersonal skills. And I'm happy to say that all 25 of those students made it through our program and were promoted. We are following them throughout the course of the year, hooked them up with some staff people to mentor them and keep up with them. Right now, as you might imagine, it's kind of a mixed bag. Some of them are doing much better, some are doing somewhat better, and some we are still working on. But that, I think, kind of speaks for itself, because last year this time, pretty much 25 of them were not doing very well. So we're going to follow those folks, and we also plan to do this again this coming summer.
And how did you fund that?
This was funded with the state priority funding money.
Did they provide transportation funding as well?
We provided, we had four teachers who worked with us on this, so provided the salaries for those teachers. We worked with transportation to provide transportation to pick the students up every day and take them home. We worked with food service, and we did lunch every day through our food service program. And we also, we obviously bought some materials and those kind of things. And we also did a couple of pretty neat field trips. The coolest one was to McIntyre Joint Air National Guard Base, which... Yeah, so really highly engaging for these students, and we think it helps some of them particularly kind of reconnect to learning and reconnect to what was important about being at school. Little update going forward, we have submitted, I guess, end of September, our application for funding for this coming year with the priority funding money. And these are the categories we're going to use it for. We're going to continue to fund our math instructional coach. So that's a pretty big chunk for salary and benefits. We're going to do the summer enrichment program again, because again, we felt that was highly impactful for a pretty good group of students. We are going to begin the process of becoming an avid school. We are really fortunate that we have a couple of folks on board with us currently, both of our assistant principals. Margaret Shillet has worked with Avid in Richland, too. And Lakeisha Cook joins us, and she is actually an avid trainer. So we have some onsite folks who already have some background in that. Caroline Springs became a site this year, so we're going to kind of piggyback on some of their learning as we go through the process. And so we look forward to beginning that process, getting some of our folks trained in that summer institute, and working towards that for next school year. In addition, we're going to use some of the funding to continue to grow our classroom libraries, and also work on materials for our math classrooms. So that's kind of our update of where we are. Any questions?
In the hospital, we have to deal with all kinds of quality metrics and the nuances of that. So I hope we're taking, again, the state report card, we can argue about the pros and cons, but it is one way to have a measuring stick such that these interventions, we can decide at the student level. So those 25 students, I would hope that they perform better year over year. And you can almost back into a value equation. So, you know, 20% improvement for a 10% cost, whatever the numbers played out to be. And then the same, for example, the math coaching and/or the teachers that engage that instructional re-education or additional education, how did those students move? And so I'm sure we're analyzing that at a district level, because obviously if it works at one school, then we can start targeting the other schools to bring that distribution. Because my guess is that mean will start moving up if that bottom 10% can just be pulled up into the fold. So, I mean, I'm sure that work's happening.
Absolutely. Well, the challenge, and I'll say this, what did, so last year when we found out that White and Old Middle School received an unsatisfactory grade, you and I had a conversation. Do you recall that conversation?
Absolutely.
What did I say to you then?
You told me that, I don't remember the exact words, but you told me we were more concerned about what students were doing, concerned about our progress, and that that didn't define us, you understood where those numbers were coming from.
Yeah, again, I do want to say, before we move forward, and I'm glad that it's not considered unsatisfactory, but the same way, when I go to the Pillion schools, I don't consider them below average either. The report card is a really flawed measure of student success and academic achievement at a school. So that, there's, to me, there's absolutely no doubt about it. There, again, Dr. Phillips, what is your degree in? And did you understand the growth measure, did you say? We have no idea what the growth rate, it's those kinds of things. If you can't explain it, well, you got a problem. So we have some real issues when it comes to, when it comes to our accountability model. And we're working, I've talked to multiple state representatives about the accountability model. What we want is an accountability model that appropriately and correctly reflects the type of learning that's taking place in a school. I'd walked through your school, I knew what was taking place in the school. I was 100% confident in that, the same way I am in the 3 Pillion schools about what's taking place. So I would tell you, congratulations on a great year. I know it's going to be another great year. There's a lot of wonderful things taking place at White and Old. The board, you're going to hear more about Avid. We'll do a session about Avid, about advancement via individual determination, national model, tremendous leverage on typically first-generation college students, but students who haven't really reached their potential yet. And so you're going to see a lot of that work out there in the White and Old area to begin with, but that'll spread pretty quickly. Are we doing anybody else but White and Old and Caroline Springs at the moment?
Gilbert Middle School is exploring Avid this year as well.
And Gilbert Middle, okay, so that'll start growing and moving. So, but no, we certainly appreciate what you're doing, and we look very carefully and plan with our schools about their data, and we're going to continue to make progress. Thank you, sir, appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate.
Mr., one question, Mr. Smith?
Mr. Guy.
Oh, Mr. Smith, one question. Just one question, and congratulations on the, you know, the achievement there. If you could nail down, and not to put you on the spot, like nail down one or two things you think that made the most difference. What do you, what do you think it was?
And I think to Dr. Powers' question, too, the data they send to the report card, which, I mean, generally, it's data we have anyway from test results and all of that, particularly that our accountability folks share with us. But it did highlight some things. Some of the biggest differences, to be quite honest, the student engagement piece. We didn't cheat on it, but we realized going into that survey the second year around, we were not going to take that for granted. We spent some time talking to our kids about student engagement before they did the survey, reminding parents the survey was coming up, just kind of making sure they understood why it was important. We did take a hard look, and it actually happened before the report card, at ESOL students. We are, I believe, one of the schools with the highest ESOL population, about 90 of our kids. So about 10% of our students receive some kind of services in that regard. And we had not done a very good job of really identifying and making sure we were serving those students the best way we could. So we took a hard look at how we were serving them, changed some of that model, and also we were granted an additional teacher, which was extremely helpful. Continuing to work on the student engagement model, and particularly the workshop model in language arts and math, which was, again, not new after report card, but it was, it just brought more attention to the fact that we believe that was a highly impactful model of instruction, great pedagogy. And we just needed to stay the course and continue working hard with our current teachers, and particularly with new teachers we bring on board, to make sure they are implementing that model with fidelity.
Good deal.
It's exciting, you were here at the end of the school year, and you talked about your plan and the fact that you've worked it so well, and your teachers and your staff, thank them for us, because it's evident that you guys are working really, really hard. So it's evident with your students, thank you. And we have a board visit there next Friday morning. I know, we're so excited. We'd like to see the, where the rubber meets the road. So thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
And we have a, one of our favorite topics here. We do, I think in August, we had this conversation, or July.
July.
And at that time, we talked to the board, and I'll let, I don't want to step on Mr. Caldwell's presentation.
Right, everyone around me already has.
Well, we do want to, we did talk about it in October, bringing you back an update on some of the work that Mr. Caldwell's been doing. And here, he is here tonight to have that conversation, to walk us through what he's done. Now, just as an aside, we're not making policy decisions tonight. What, we want to show you our policy recommendations based upon the feedback that Mr. Caldwell's done. So I just want to make sure we're understanding our expectations for tonight. So, Mr. Caldwell.
Thank you, Dr. Little, and Madam Chair, members of the board. And I'll begin with the end in mind, not only are we making recommendations, I will end this with a request that you take this information over the next month and give us feedback as we prepare to possibly make amendments to a recently amended policy. So just as a reminder, if you, back in May, we received a memo from the State Department telling us that the Youth Access to Tobacco Act of 2006 had been amended, and with that required some changes to our policy. While I felt the changes were relatively minor, there was new language in the state models. So we, and also the governor mandated that we have that done by August 1st. So that gave us the months of June and July to go through the two readings, so that's why it was kind of a hurried process, if you remember. There are three policies that this touches. It's the tobacco and nicotine-free school district, tobacco and nicotine-free workplace, and the tobacco and nicotine used by students. And also, if you remember, all three policies have the exact same language. So we made those amendments and made those changes, and they were approved at the July 16th board meeting. And at that time, a request was made for me to have an October update, and it's October. So what we did from July forward was to get stakeholder input that we normally would have gotten had we had an opportunity to do it, but we're in the summertime and a very tight timeframe. So I met with Parent Advisory Council, I met with Student Advisory Council, I met with the Teacher Leadership Council, I got feedback from other members of the community. And basically, we went through a protocol where I gave them the old policy, I gave them the new policy, I gave them just one copy, I gave them the student policy, because again, they're all three same language. And I asked them to partner, I asked them to read the policies, partner with someone at their table, and tell us the things that they liked about the changes, the things that they didn't like about the changes, or the wonders that they had, and the hopes. So I did this three separate times, and I actually had a member of the community actually go out to a PTO at one of the schools and do the same process. And so that landed me with about 127 sticky notes that I had, that I spread out on my kitchen table, and tried to find patterns and trends, because there were one-off comments or things that really didn't apply. But what I looked for were patterns and trends. What were things that people were saying over and over, that the students and the parents and the teachers were saying collectively? And we found three or four definite trends. Most of the responses, the majority of the responses that were received were around the discipline in fractions. If you'll recall, there were lots of discipline and consequences we could have added with a new policy. We elected to use just the one-day-out-of-school and the three-day-out-of-school consequence, consequences. Lots of folks said they would like to see the community service back in the policy as a consequence option. Interestingly enough, a lot of students, a lot of participants thought that out-of-school suspension for the first offense was too harsh. I will tell you, as an aside, we did have one response that said, "I think the first offense should be a three-day-out-of-school suspension, and I think the second offense should be a recommendation for expulsion." should be a recommendation for expulsion. I can't remember which school that student went to, but that was a student response. So the parents and the teachers were much more lenient and understanding of the therapeutic approach we're trying to take. Maybe that belies the fact that the student was very fed up with going to the restroom and it becoming a vaping lounge. A lot of folks also said, if cessation program, if education is good after the second offense, well, why isn't it good after the first offense? Another thing that came up was about staff infractions, because again, there are, one of these policies deals specifically with staff, that was the second most frequent policy that was commented, or portion of the policy that was commented. They wanted a, lots of folks wanted a specific order of the staff consequences, while they are listed, they are not necessarily listed, and the order of those consequences being imposed, and we will have further conversations with our HR friends to talk through that. If it dealt with a, an employee's suspension, they wanted to know how long that suspension might be, and if, and we discussed this back in the summer, would nicotine patches be allowed? So those kind of questions bubbled up to the surface as we went through this process.
Do we have any idea, like, what percent of our staff vapes?
I do not.
I mean, I've, I'll be honest, all the schools I've visited, I've never seen anybody vaping at a, as a staff member.
They're not supposed to be doing anything like that at school, but so I would have no idea.
Right, I just wondered, that's interesting.
Other questions that came up, that the cost of the cessation program, the quality of enforcement, this came up a lot, particularly in the student policy, how are you going to enforce it, and even more specifically, how are you going to enforce it in the restrooms and the bathrooms, because that seems to be the place of choice. So, I'll get back to that in just a moment, I just wanted to throw at you just a few points of data. I can tell you, you can do a thesis, you can do a doctoral degree in vaping if you have the time and the energy to do it, and you can get lost in the data. And you can, if you put, if you Google vaping, and then you can spend the rest of the day, the week, the month, looking at research and stats and that sort of thing. But, in Lexington 1, the tobacco violations, and that's in quotes, because vaping currently is a tobacco offense, so it's listed in Power School as a tobacco violation. Those violations more than doubled from the seventeen, eighteen school year to the eighteen, nineteen school year, and this year, of all the, this current year, nineteen, twenty, about ninety-five percent of all of our tobacco violations are vaping. So cigarettes and dip and those kind of things are very much a thing of the past, and vaping is the tobacco offense of choice. Nationwide, I found this kind of interesting, as of October the fourth, when I was wrapping up this research, there'd been, according to the Wall Street Journal, there'd been over a thousand people hospitalized and nineteen deaths related to vaping. The CDC, who updates their data every Thursday, as of last Thursday, twelve hundred and ninety-nine lung injury cases and twenty-six confirmed deaths. So in four days, seven people died. Now, if you carry that math out, you can see that we're talking about truly an epidemic. In fact, it's so much of an epidemic, I found out just this weekend, and I received a copy of it yesterday from Dave Duff, you know, one of our district's attorneys, there is a, what the state of Washington, this district in Washington is calling a class action suit, Dave refers to it as a multi-plaintive suit, but they've started that in the state of Washington, one very small school district has filed an eighty-page complaint, and Dave has been contacted by an out-of-state attorney, asking if we would be interested in joining the complaint. So that is, that is new as of yesterday afternoon. So we really don't know where that's going, but I do tell you that if this is not a Lexington 1 problem, it's not a South Carolina problem, this was a six-hundred-student district in Washington State that began this process. But nonetheless, twenty-six deaths as of October the eighth.
And I think DEHEC is going to be speaking to this at some point at the state level, you know, we're required by law to report certain communicable diseases, and they're actively requesting for vaping-associated lung disease deaths in the state, because I challenged, you know, this is not on the list, and they responded back, they're considering it a state crisis, so anything they consider, then they can require us to report, so.
That's right, that's exactly right. And it is such a thing now, and Mr. Anderson shared this with me earlier today, DEHEC now has its own name, and I don't know how it's pronounced, but it's E-V-A-L-I, e-vally, e-cigarette and vaping product use associated lung industry. So it's, it has become its own category. In fact, jeweling, the word jewel is now a verb instead of a noun. Jewel owns seventy percent of the market share, they are apparently still building a facility in our backyard, but they currently have, they've become a ten-billion-dollar industry. They did it in a matter of months, in fact, four times faster than Facebook, but people always look at Facebook as the company that just skyrocketed. Well, in three years' existence, they have become a ten-billion-with-a-B dollar industry, and it doesn't seem to be slowing down. Some of the safety concerns, and I present this for two reasons, one to kind of just remind you of, and again, this merely scratches the surface, but it just reminds you, the board and us, as an SLT and as a district, of the safety concerns, and it also reminds us that these are the kind of things we probably need, in fact, not probably, we need to do a better job of educating our students and educating our parents and our staff about this, because I don't know that they understand the depth and the breadth of this problem just yet. Most e-cigarettes, as we know, contain nicotine, we also worry about the other pods that they can put in, those that may have illegal substances. In fact, ninety-nine percent of e-cigarettes sold do contain nicotine, although oftentimes they don't advertise, they don't, they don't say on the packaging that they do contain nicotine. And we also know about the berry flavors and the mangoes and the watermelons and those kind of things, although they swear that they did not intend to market this to children, and they've apologized profusely, they haven't stopped doing those kind of things. And research tells us that nicotine can harm the developing adolescent brain, and it keeps developing until about age twenty-five, and we're looking at a demographic of twelve to seventeen, twelve to eighteen-year-olds in our schools that are mainly the users. More safety concerns, and I don't have to read all this for you, but we know that it affects, nicotine can affect the attention span, learning mood, impulse control, it actually rewires the brain when those synapses are being formed, and it also increases the risk for future addiction to other drugs. It certainly increases the risk of addiction to nicotine, which Jeff Caldwell believes is the purpose of the jeweling to begin with. I think it was first marketed as a, an opportunity to quit smoking, it seems to have become apparent that it is an opportunity to get hooked on smoking, and with, and this train wreck is, doesn't seem to have an end in sight. We talk about the vaping, well, vape, it's not really a water vapor, there is no water in these mechanisms, it's an aerosol. Well, the name in itself, it just lends itself to something that's not good for you. If my wife took her hairspray and sprayed it in my face, which she may have done before, it is not, is not a good thing. It has the substances in this aerosol that bystanders can be affected by also, contains nicotine, particles that can be inhaled into the lungs, the flavoring, and I don't know if it's diaceto, I don't know how to pronounce that word, but it's a chemical linked to serious lung disease, there's organic compounds, cancer-causing chemicals, obviously the folks are dying from something. And one person commented to me that, well, you know, folks die from cigarettes all the time. Well, they do after smoking forty years. These folks are dying after smoking for weeks and months, or just a few years, so. Again, more information about the aerosol that is harmful not only to the user but to bystanders, and we often just don't know what's in those pods. So next steps, we certainly need to increase our student and parent awareness of the dangers of vaping, that's why I've, you know, listing out some of the safety concerns as a reminder to all of us to do a better job with that. I've already talked to Mary Beth in her office about putting some links to the CDC and other sites on our district's website, that is a plethora of information, if parents will take, and students will take the time to look at that. We are planning on hosting programs to highlight the dangers of vaping, in fact, one is happening next week, you should have received an invitation to that, if you haven't, you're officially invited now. It's called Vaping Addiction: A Mother and Son Experience. It's a young man, I think, from North Carolina, who is a school-age student, a high school-age student, who tells his story of the three or four times he's gone through rehab because of vaping.
I think that's a White Knoll High program.
It's at White Knoll High School next, I think that's Thursday, the 21st, at 6:30, if I'm not mistaken. One thing that's come up in conversation is the feasibility of vape detection devices for school restrooms, that is something that we could look into. I will tell you what I've seen so far, those devices cost about a thousand dollars a piece, and then there's a yearly, you know, maintenance cost and that sort of thing. A very, very rough estimate, we have about two hundred and twenty-five bathrooms or so in our middle and high schools, so, you know, should we do something like that? If we wanted to go down that road, then we're talking about a significant...
I was listening to a radio program yesterday about vaping, and they were talking about that those detection devices are really good, they didn't mention the cost, but hopefully as the demand grows, that more people will make them and the cost will go down. But do teachers seem to sense that it is a bathroom issue, they go in the bathrooms and vape?
Absolutely, in fact, it's kind of become a joke, but people have commented, and Mr. Salters has heard his own children say, you know, I went to a vaping lounge and someone put toilets in there. Just so that's not a Lexington 1 thing, or a particular high school thing, the lawsuit that was issued by the district in Washington State said the same thing. They actually had pictures, and so that trend, that thought, is nationwide, that the bathroom is the number-one spot where those kind of things happen, so. That's right, and what Mary Beth was saying, the Student Advisory Council hammered us on it, about the, you know, walking into this cloud of vapor. So in the meantime, we certainly need to increase our, the visibility of our administrators and other staffs in the restrooms and other areas, when I said other high-incident locations, I don't really know what the other incident locations are, because it's mainly a bathroom issue, but, you know, we just need to be more visible and more diligent in trying to, not necessarily catch the kids, but we're trying to eradicate a problem, if at all possible. So when I looked at all the feedback, and I laid it out on my kitchen table, and then talked with the other folks, and they offered suggestions, a few of these are really kind of clerical in nature, there was some clarification of some of the language, we may have only had the word possession, and we needed to have the word possession and use, just to be very clear in some of the language. Add the language that administrators will not only confiscate the items, but they will not return them, I think that was kind of implied, but we want to be emphatic that we're going to take it from you, and you're not getting it back. Add community services, I mentioned earlier, back as a consequence option, and edit the tobacco industry language, that's the paragraph that says, we will not accept money from the tobacco industry. Again, imply that we would not accept money from the e-cigarette industry, but we want to be more clear and just kind of change that. Probably the biggest recommended change is to, again, folks overwhelmingly said, we don't particularly like OSS first offense, and we don't know why you're waiting until second offense to do the education program, so we thought that we would suggest merging the two. So the first offense, instead of an out-of-school suspension, would be an in-school suspension, and while in in-school suspension, complete an online tobacco/vaping cessation program. There's lots out there, we're currently reviewing some of those with our friends from Luridec and other places, so I think if we went that route, we could certainly, in fact, we got an email just today, Dr. Tally forwarded to me, that there's been some research and some education programs that are being made available to the schools, so we would, we could spend the next couple of months if we chose to do that, to be sure that we have a program that would meet those needs.
And that education needs to show a video of someone dying of this, it's kind of like the crystal meth discussion, I mean, those pictures of people have used crystal meth in a year or two years, I mean, that gets, that has incredible street traction.
Like the before-and-after pictures.
Yeah, so part of that education needs to be someone who's dying from an associated, vaping-associated lung disease, and, I mean, I don't know, I'm sure someone's willing to do that for us, to provide that footage for us.
Sure, absolutely. That's right.
Right, like those old scared-straight programs.
Oh, absolutely.
I think those are effective.
Yeah.
And I would just, because I attended the Drug and Alcohol Task Force today, and Luridec's presentation on vaping was excellent, and I think one of the things about the cessation program, and I'm sure this is part of your research, is I think it's very important that the cessation program that we require is targeted towards vaping, because one of the problems is these students don't realize that vaping products contain nicotine. I mean, they think they're jeweling, you know, cotton candy vapor.
That's right.
I mean, they really do, and so I think we need to make sure that it's tailored towards, if it's tobacco, they're going to tune out, because they don't think that applies to them.
And to that point, it could probably be exclusively vaping, but there's ninety-five percent of the offenses now are vaping as we sit, so. So absolutely, it would need to be, if not exclusively, certainly heavy on the vaping, and the more graphic and the more real we can make it, then the better off we can be.
We could just make it all the students wear scarlet Vs for vaping, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
Well, you know, a little bit of public humiliation can go a long way.
To the old scared-straight thing, I mean, I think that because vaping can be done so quietly and so inconspicuously in the bathroom, I mean, parents, teachers, nobody will, I don't know how you police it, and so anything that we can do to, you know, to create a stigma around it, obviously not a scarlet V, but anything that we can help these students understand just how serious the decision is to vape.
One of the things that I read, it's not in this presentation, because I'm actually at the end, is that in 1997, if I go back that timeframe, about thirty-five percent of students in our high school age bracket admitted to smoking. By 2017, it was down to about seven percent, so that war, if you will, that battle and that, creating that stigma, and that public health problem with smoking almost was eliminated. And in one year's time, some of the research I've read said, we've reversed that trend in one year's time through vaping. And, you know, safer doesn't mean safe, and you're right, the students just don't understand what it is they're doing. So the last next step that I have here is a respectful request that you, as a school board, really study this information and any other information that you find, and offer input to me and to SLT over this next month, so when we come back in November, then maybe we're ahead of the game, and we will have some real quality amendments to make to the policy, and for first reading at the November board meeting. With that, I will open it up, any questions you may have?
The only thing, as you said, remove the education from the second offense, again, I think education after each offense, because it's not bad they go through the same material.
And to that point, the reason I had to remove it is because we were doing it at the first one, that's not to say we, it couldn't be, it could be a more robust education program after the first offense, or after the second offense, I mean, yeah.
Mr. Caldwell, do you know where, this might be a question for Dr. Tally, where in our curriculum, I know in, like, the health class in high school, there's a vaping unit about two-thirds of the way through, does that lesson, do those vaping lessons live anywhere else, other than just our health classes?
I do not know the answer to that, I will find that out, but I don't know that.
I mean, I just, I wonder if we need to do, to be more aggressive in putting this education about vaping in front of the students, whether it's in their crew, for the class, for the schools that have crew, you know, when you're talking about the...
Definitely in middle school. That same radio thing I was listening to, she, the main lady said she sees them all the time at twelve. She said they really come in and they're so addicted at twelve years old.
And what you were saying about the cigarette smoking, the decrease that we saw decline, I mean, my children that came through elementary school, you know, 2005 through 2011, when the anti-smoking thing was such a significant part of their health classes, I mean, they thought that smoking was the absolute worst possible thing you could ever do, and, you know, I think that we need to have that sort of aggressive education, even into the middle school, you know, seventh, eighth, ninth grade, where they can't avoid getting that message. I think that needs to be one of our priorities, is to push that information out just as hard as we can.
I agree with that, and I think one of the unspoken things is, is yet again, we've not caught up to the trend, and by the time we do, in fact, there's probably something already out there that we just don't know about, so if we get a good handle on... So if we, we get a good handle on, on vaping and then maybe something else comes along, I wish we could stay out in front of that. But I think to your point, the education probably is very tobacco and cigarette heavy because that's been our, our thing for fifty years. And now all of a sudden, out of the darkness comes this, this device and we just, you know, weren't prepared to, to handle it. But, but we will be. Any other questions?
I have a question. You said tobacco violations more than doubled from seventeen, eighteen to eighteen, nineteen. Are we talking eighty percent or fifty-five percent?
I'm not sure I understand the.
I'm just kind of curious, on one of those slides, you said that the violations have more than doubled.
So if it were, if it were three hundred the year before, it was over six hundred this, the next year.
Okay.
I don't, I don't.
Okay, I'm just wondering.
I don't have the numbers in my head.
Okay.
But it was, it was, let's say, two fifty in seventeen, eighteen and maybe over five hundred eighteen, nineteen.
Okay.
If you wouldn't quote me exactly on those numbers, but it was, that's what it was. It was more than, more than twice as much.
Okay, thank you.
So.
That's, that's a very good suggestion and we will certainly, like I said, we'd, just today, there was, we have a drug task force that the district is a part of and through RADA. And so that's certainly there, there, I'm sure would be something like that or something we could develop on our own to do that. So that's a great suggestion. Thank you for that.
So a couple of observations since, since we talked about this in July. The, the trend has gone one in five for, for high school students to one in four, to now we're approaching one in three.
For use.
For use. And that's felt to probably be a conservative number. And so we're talking, you know, we're approaching, and, and again, of that, an important figure to remember is that one-third of those also go on to put something else in their body. So thirty-three percent of thirty-three percent, that's, that's a big number. Which amazes me that, that we're surprised that superheating a chemical causes problems. I mean, we live in a world where we're worried about heating up a, a microwave plastic because it's got a BPA in it and we're surprised that we're getting sick from this. So that, I find that shocking. Secondly, we didn't have illness and death three months ago. Now we do. So you're seeing a much more captive audience and, and I've actually even seen that within my office. So I have now seen multiple patients who have come in who are terrified that something is wrong with their lungs now. And, you know, they've come in and said, I've stopped vaping, you know, but I'm just, I'm a nervous wreck. I'm a nervous wreck. And so there is very much a captive audience now because of the, the national media, because of, of the, the stance that is being taken. We have a very captive audience right now. And so, you know, the, the time to act is, is now. I have personally completely changed my approach and how I approach vaping in my office. It's not, do you vape? It's, when did you last vape? One little secret I'll give y'all, when you go to your doctor and they ask you how many glasses of wine you have a day, we double it. All right? So when y'all say, when y'all say, no, I just drink two glasses of wine a night, oh, she's drinking four. So it's, it's an understood that you're gonna probably marginalize a little bit of that. So we, we, we factor in some of that. So that's caused me to change my approach to now, when's the last time you vaped? Because one out of three, one out of two times, I'm probably going to be right. And secondly, in my, I guess, coaching of this, you know, I, I think we, we live in a world now where seeking the truth is, is one of the noblest acts you can do. And so we see a lot of truth seekers right now, especially within the young population. They are seeking truth. They are seeking truth. And so my approach to them is, you are being lied to and you have fell for it, hook, line and sinker. You have been told the lie that this is safer. Now guess what? People are dying. You have been told that, oh, we would never go after, you know, the, the younger groups. Well, why do you think they're hiring social media influencers? Where do you spend most of your time on social media? And so, you know, you've basically been reduced to a profit line, a profit and loss statement. And, and that's kind of what I'm telling parents. Remember, your child is now a line on a business's profit and loss statement. And it's sad. It's, it, it should cause that, that righteous indignation that, that should just, just exist at the parent, teacher, administrator, community level.
And that's, that's exactly what it is. That, that lawsuit, and again, it's eighty pages long, so I haven't read all eighty pages. But it talks about Juul and their seventy percent market share. It also talks about another company, starts with a name, I don't remember what the name is, but the FDA came down on that, on that company. And as a result, it, it apologized profusely for, you know, marketing to, to kids. It admitted that the, the student use was epidemic. It denounced Juul and all of the things that they were doing. I mean, it really just kind of took the high road and, and made a pledge that forevermore, we're going to do a better job of, you know, we're going to market to the adults and leave the kids out of it. And I'm, they said it much more eloquently than that, obviously. That was in October. In December, that same company invested twelve-point-eight billion dollars in Juul. The same company that denounced them, that said they were the evil empire, now owns thirty-five percent of that company. They also have the, the largest market share of Marlboro, which is the number one cigarette cigarette, so they, they got you coming and going. And it is about the bottom line.
I actually got a, an update this week from somebody told me Juulings out. We, we don't Juul anymore. There's some cheaper options out there. We go with these different pods. There's a new pod apparently that's being used or something along those lines. So nobody Juuls anymore, is what I was told. And it's like, well, I'm just now catching up to the Juul thing. I mean. Right, right.
And they fashioned their marketing and their device and their, their bottom line after big tobacco. They're, they're using tactics that big tobacco through their settlements couldn't use, but they had access to thousands and thousands of documents. And they have, they have, their, their business plan is fashioned after big tobacco with no, you know, with no restraints. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Caldwell. So we'll be bringing some more information. We'll have that to you and just some feedback and we'll work on November and December to, to finalizing that policy and also looking into some educational programs as well. I know that's one of the things will be on our list. So finally, we have, or almost finally tonight, we have what often happens to Mr. Salters is he ends up batting cleanup and sharing with us some things. So, Mr. Salters.
Thank you, Dr. Little. Briefly tonight, I have some pictures of the construction going on in our bond referendum program. And I start out at Centerville Elementary School tonight. As you recall, it, Centerville is being built. We, we have plans and was approved in the facilities plan to close or retire the name of Gilbert Primary School, move Gilbert Elementary School back to Gilbert Primary's location, which was originally Gilbert Elementary School, if you follow that. So the Gilbert Elementary School will become a K-five school again. Centerville will be the other K-five school in the area, so we'll have two full elementary schools. So we're pleased with the progress going on out here at Centerville. This is a shot, really Highway One would be in the lower portion of your, your view. And so we, we have, you can see the entrance driveway is kind of taking shape here. We've got all of our foundation block in. We have, the, the walls are up to bearing height here on the, the back classroom wing there. And we've had a, a concrete pour, a big concrete pour in the cafeteria, fine arts area. And we have some of the parking lot lay down is actually already, already done here as well. So they're moving along nicely. As you recall, the school is slated to open in August of this next year. So it may not look like it will, but it will. And we've been very fortunate with the, the weather over the last, really, four to six months. We've, the, the drought is not good for the community, but it is good for the construction of, of our facility. So we are, we're making good, good progress. This is, and just a shot of the cafeteria area, that would be the loading dock there on the, on the left side. But good progress there at Centerville. Moving on to Pelean Middle School. Again, just a reminder, Centerville is a prototype of the original Rocky Creek Elementary School plan and then Metaglen and Deerfield. Pelean Middle School is a prototype of Beechwood. And very pleased with the progress going on at, at Pelean. I've kind of joked with that contractor that they're gonna, they have a two-year build, but they're gonna squeeze it all into a year and end up beating the Centerville opening, it seems like. They're really moving fast out there. You, you remember what Beechwood looks like? So you can kind of see it taking shape. These are the classroom wings here on the left. Your cafeteria space is in, in the back. The kitchen, they're ready for a pour there. You've got the crane here that's actually setting steel and decking on the back classroom wing. We've actually got second floor door frame set and, and masonry going up on the second floor on the A wing there. And then the foundations are laid out. At, at Pelean, we flipped the auditorium and, and gymnasium space. And so this is the auditorium here, the gymnasium's in the front. The main office area is, you know, still located here as well. So really good, good progress out there. The soil conditions are very conducive to, you know, working even when it's, it's wet. We did have a, a small shower the other night. Calling for some more rain this evening that we hope we get. So you can see we're really coming along on this project as well. They have poured, or will have poured the kitchen by the, by next week. All of that rough end is, is taking place and that's a big deal. There's a lot of stuff going on in that kitchen space that, that they have to prepare for.
We went to the meeting in Swampey the other night. I rode by there and I, I mean, it looks like a school. I mean, there's no, it doesn't look like framing or it, I could definitely see the school. It's so exciting.
Yeah, you can really, really see the, the, the shape coming up. And it's, it's nice to have already seen it, what it looks like in, in the end. And so having Beechwood built, so you can kind of get a real good perspective of it. Caroline Springs Elementary School, just briefly, this is, we have a storage building. One of the projects in the referendum is to, to put a, a number of storage buildings around the district. And they're very excited about this building. And it's located in the back near the kitchen area and it will be, it will have a brick veneer finish to, to match the school and roofing. So really excited to get that up. And then just the, the last pictures of, of these campuses for a little while, but just want to highlight the fact that we, you know, last month, we had some still roofing that was going on and you can see the, the new roofs, it's pretty obvious. All the cap sheet and everything has been finished there. So we're real pleased with that progress at Lexington High School. That, that is, is now completed. And of course, they continue to enjoy their new parking lot surfaces there at Lexington High School. As always, you can check the, the progress of our building plan at the website. I really appreciate the communications department working with us and getting those pictures up and keeping track of that for us so our community can, can see these projects firsthand. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you have about those.
I just want to say thank you again for you and the whole team because again, it's amazing all that we're juggling and, I mean, we take it in stride and we can focus as a board on instruction, which ultimately is our goal. But obviously, if you don't have the physical plant to support instruction, you can't even talk about instruction. So thank you again.
Absolutely. We've got several guys here. You know, John and Matt do a tremendous job keeping us on schedule and, and keeping our architects and contractors moving forward. So really, really pleased with the work.
No retiring in anyone's future, I hope.
We have that conversation occasionally.